You are.
Oh, what on the me?
End recording. Do you want to wait?
I just needed to unmute the, I didn't realize I still had the thing muted.
Okay, all right, you ready? Yep, okay. Good evening, this is the Town of Camden Select Board meeting for November 15th, the Ides of November 2022. Just as a few items up front, we are streaming on Spectrum Cable or on Spectrum Cable TV Channel 1303. We are streaming on YouTube under the Town of Camden. We are also available webinar, a link on Zoom if you'd like to join in. The link can be found on the Town of Camden website, on the Select Board, go to Select Board meetings, and on the packet or agenda, there is the Zoom link. Anybody on Zoom, please remember to not use the chat function, to, if you would like to ask questions and answers, you can do Q and A, it's much preferred if you raise your hand and we can bring you on onto the screen so we can have a face-to-face chat, as it were. Before we actually call the meeting to order, Audra, we have an announcement to make.
Yes, I'd like to introduce everyone to a new staff member that we have here with us tonight. So, this is Shenley Neely, our new planner.
Shenley, please come up.
I feel bad putting her on the spot, but I said, when, since she was here, it'd be a nice opportunity to introduce her to the board and anybody else who's at the meeting tonight. So Shenley's an incredibly experienced planner, we're so, so lucky to have her. She's had a lot of roles in the state of Florida. She was on the bleeding edge of a lot of the coastal resiliency planning that they did there post Sandy. So I think a lot of the experiences she's had with that sort of work and all the other roles she's had, it's really pretty incredible to look at her resume and the full breadth of stuff that she's done is going to be a huge asset to Camden, so thank you Shenley.
I'm glad to hear you so much.
Nobody can hear you.
No, I just wanted to thank you very much for the introduction, and I'm very happy to be here. I'm looking forward to working with everybody, so.
So are we, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, I'm ready.
Thank you. And thank you for helping this evening.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. With that, I will call toward the agenda for this evening's meeting, and the first item being, any public comment on non-agenda items? Does anybody have a public comment on a non-agend item? Not seeing anybody, we'll move to item two, which is request the approval of the board meeting minutes from November 1st, 2022. Are there any comments or a motion to approve?
I make a motion we approve the minutes from the November 1st, 2022 meeting.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion?
I abstain.
Yes, that's correct, yes, correct, thank you Stephanie. All those in favor, 4-0, thank you very much. We have four items.
Well, actually, there is a mistake, the adjournment, the motion was passed 5-0, it should be 4-0.
Oops.
Yeah, that just needs to be corrected.
Okay.
Good catch.
Good catch.
Sophie, you may need to have your microphone a little closer to your mouth.
You're not that tall. Anyway, on to item number three, which is public hearings, we have four. I just want, as an intro, the purpose of public hearings for the Select Board to solicit comments from the public on the matters at hand, either for, against, or just want to speak to the item. If anybody wants to speak, please raise their hand, and I'll allow them to come to the podium, make their comments, and when we, and please be brief, to the point, and address all questions through me, the chair. And when we've gone through all the public comments, well, I will close the public input portion and revert to the Select Board decision on the item. If, if, and there will be no more input from the public unless one of the Select Board members has a question of somebody who's previously spoken. So with that, we have, the first one is the application of the Blaze Camden at 5 Bayview Landing for a Class III Restaurant Lounge Liquor License. Anybody here from the public for this one? I don't see any, so I'll close the public portion and revert to the Select Board. Any questions or motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? All's in favor, 5-0, thank you. The second item is the application of Grand Harbor Inn at 14 Bayview Landing for a Class III Bed and Liquor License.
Breakfast.
Yeah, Bed and Breakfast Liquor License, I can't read.
I like the idea of Bed and Liquor, though.
I do too, yeah, well, I've been there. Bed and Breakfast Liquor License, anybody that'd like to speak to that, that application?
I'm Matthew Levin, I'm here.
Just come up and say hi, just come up and say hi, make it exciting for us.
Hello, everybody, I'm Matthew Levin, I oversee the Bayview Collection, which represents the Lord Camden Inn, Grand Harbor Inn, and 16 Bayview, and soon the Rockport Harbor Hotel. I haven't been to one of these board meetings since pre-COVID, so it's nice to see some new board members, so congratulations, Tom, Sophie, and Stephanie. So for the Grand Harbor Inn, we're actually, it's not the liquor license, it's for wine license. And so we just serve bottled wine to guests that order it to their room. Lord Camden Inn has the same license, and then 16 Bayview has a full liquor license because we have the bars. So I'm here usually just to respect your time when you kind of acknowledge these licenses. We also have our vitrular and lodging license up for 16 Bayview, so thank you guys for your time, and any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much for coming, we do appreciate the respect, that's important, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you, guys.
I will close the public discussion input on this item, do I have a motion or questions or?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, 5-0. The third is the application of Gypsy Rose Tavern at 115 Elm Street for a new Class I Restaurant Liquor License. Anybody of the public here to speak to that one? Not seeing anyone, I will close the public portion and revert to Select Board deliberation, motion or questions?
Where is, where is that?
Gypsy Rose.
The Cedar Crest.
The Cedar Crest, yeah, I had to look up the address to figure out where it was.
It was Oliver's, right?
It was Oliver's Bistro, yeah, is that the new name?
And now it's going to be the Gypsy Rose Tavern.
Okay.
Cool.
Cool, perfect parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion, all's in favor, 5-0, thank you. And the last on our public hearings is the application of the Heartstone Inn at 41 Elm Street for a renewal Hotel Class I Liquor License. I don't see anybody here from the public that's going to speak to that one, so I'll close the public portion and revert to Select Board.
I move to approve.
A second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All's in favor, 5-0, thank you, and with that, we'll close out the public hearing portion of our meeting. We have three items on the consent agenda tonight, they are renewal lodging and bitler licenses for 16 Bayview at 16 Bayview Landing, renewal of the lodging and bitler license for Heartstone Enterprises at 41 Elm Street, and lastly, a new bitler's license for Gypsy Rose Tavern at 115 Elm Street. Are there any objections by the board to the items on the consent agenda? Not hearing any of these three items are hereby approved. On to item five, which we have action items, there are three. The first of which is a funding request for the harbor float replacement. Audra, you want to give us a quick characterization?
Yes, so you have a few of these department head funding requests in front of you, and this is really not a new process, we're just sort of, you know, kind of having it all in one place and one policy, so it's very clear as to when these sorts of requests need to come in front of the Select Board. So this one is for the replacement of floats down at the harbor that currently have the blue polystyrene on them still. So they all needed to have been replaced by November of this year. These were two that were missed, and we need to follow our own ordinance because we're at the point now where we've expected everybody else to have their floats out and to have those replaced, and, you know, we need to do the same. Unfortunately, this expense wasn't budgeted for. We do have funds available in a number of reserve accounts that we can cover this cost with, but the Select Board does need to formally approve it.
Are these reserves in the harbor budget?
They're harbor reserves, they're several harbor reserves.
We're not going between departments, I just want to be clear on that.
Right, yeah, it's a reserve account for harbor purposes.
Board questions, Allison? Well, excuse me, how much is it? Just to say it in public.
So $77,712.
Go ahead, Allison.
Okay. So first of all, I'm just so excited to see that this is finally happening. I was a Conservation Commission member six or seven years ago when this was discussed, and I think Camden is one of the first towns in the country to have an ordinance that gets rid of the polystyrene. So I kind of envisioned it was going to be this big problem when it finally came around in five years, but everybody's making a really huge effort. It's amazing to drive by, like Bog Bridge right now, and it's already such a transformation. It looks, it looks so much better there. So I know it's an issue for people, and it's especially really hard for, you know, some of the floats were already like at their complete end of life, and so it was an easy, you know, people understood that they needed, they were going to replace them anyway. But for these that have just like a tiny bit more life in them, I know that's sort of the hardest part, and that I really appreciate Steve that you try to get all the life you possibly can suck out of everything down there, and also, it's been really nice to see that the floats are in longer. These particular ones, I can see why they would have been missed because they're really being like well utilized right now. You know, I still have a dinghy down there, and I know a lot of other people do, and even for our visitors in the winter, it's nice to see, you know, boats and activity down there. So obviously, you know, we do need to do this, even though there is maybe just a little bit more life in those floats. There's a high school program that is, has been really active in trying to salvage usable wood for construction projects, and it might be worth reaching out to them to see if that's something that they could use, but I think obviously, you know, we need to, we need to do this. I would just hope that you're not going to kick everybody, like if, we are in a situation where we've overstayed the deadline a little bit, but there are still boats down there that are using the floats, so I don't know how to handle that, but I, what's this timeline for, for replacement?
Sure.
Like that we have them ready to go, like they could be delivered?
I would say, we don't have them ready to go, because we have to approve the expense, but I would say that the plan is for all of the floats that have the blue polystyrene on them, if this is approved tonight, we need to pull them out immediately to be able to comply with our ordinance.
Well, Audra, that, maybe we could make a plan for that, because you're, I mean, there are boats that have winter dinghy permits, and I don't know if it's possible to put some of the ones that don't.
I was going to say, like, Steve can manage where those, where the other, there are other places that those can go, and he can figure that out.
Yeah, and I want to point out, this is not for the public, because it's $77,000, we're talking about an eight-foot float here. This is a float system, because the landing is not a small piece of linear footage, so that's why the price is where it's at, at $77,000. The average person's float doesn't cost that much to change.
These are really big, there are many of them, it's the ones where the, all the dinghies.
And the landing floats.
Just the day sailor and the dinghy.
Just the day sailor.
Free day sailor, yeah.
But we had a question, what was the question that we had for Steve?
Timeline. Or that was my question.
I was hoping to leave them in until spring, because the season's over, and then replace them before the season starts, but.
How many people have you had this conversation with, that they have to have their compliance?
So it's us that's not, so it's our floats, but then there are other people's dinghies.
But how many people have?
There are, there are so few of the older inner harbor floats that, you know, they are in the process, same thing. They have.
Oh, those ones.
They're having new ones made, but they're not done yet.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I forgot, but this doesn't talk about, this is just ours.
This is just ours.
This is just ours.
Just ours.
So we don't have any alternative, it's either these or we have nothing for those particular areas?
Correct.
So I mean, I'm very supportive of going ahead and purchasing the new ones, we've known that we have to do that, and we just need to bite the bullet and do it, but I think we should be reasonable about, I mean, I don't know if you can take some of the ones that are stacked in the middle of the public landing and put those in and take the styrofoam ones out, that's, they're not really the right ones for.
I guess my question would be, when, when, I mean, we're passing the deadline when? It was in November 1st, so it's already passed.
Already passed.
When, spring, before the 2024 season ramps up?
He's recommending spring.
It's acceptable to me.
I think so too, I think so too. Let's go ahead and get a motion from the board.
I have one more question about the three driven pilings. So you're going to drive three more pilings?
Yes.
As part of the system, and those are to replace existing pilings, or those are new?
Those are to replace two six-ton blocks that crisscross, let's say this is the day sailor float right here, there's two pilings here, and then since there's two boats, and a lot of times they overnight with wind, there's chain that comes and links over to this corner, another chain that comes with links, so at low tide, there's a little too much flex, so that's why we're going to get rid of that and put a dolphin right in the middle.
So it's a slight redesign of the system?
It's better, it's more safer, it's stronger.
It's more sturdy.
What's the lifetime expectancy of the dolphin?
The dolphin's is PT 20, 25, 30 years.
All the foundations in Venice are wood.
Does this price include that?
Yes.
Yes, it does, that's in the memo.
I am completely supportive of this. I also think that as we're kind of past our deadline, and that we're looking at spring to install the styrofoam, that the same kind of leniency should be extended to private owners and other people, that, because they're going to do the same, they're going to order it now and install it.
And I think a lot of, a lot of them did, were trying, and they, and they know that by spring, beginning of the next season, they'll be out.
And remember, most of the private individuals already have their floats out of the water.
Exactly.
They won't be putting them in the water unless they have them modified.
Yep.
So it's a little different situation, but not much.
Many of them already did get a pass, like, because it did go over the deadline.
They did, they did.
It's always that one or two that I'm worried about, though, that.
Was that Stephanie?
It's always that one or two that wants to push the deadline and all of that. So if we have something in place, it's for a reason, and we need to be fair across the board.
Yeah, agreed.
So have, yeah, we notify, so it would be your job in the harbor to, I actually have a bunch of questions.
I've talked to two inspectors that already, we've talked about, there's two that still need to be replaced, and they're in the process of building new ones, so.
And then what about other floats along the, are there any others, like along the shore? Most of those all get pulled anything?
On the coastal harbor, no, as far as I know, they're all the black encapsulated tubs.
And then Randy is the person on the lake?
Yes, yep.
And then there's Hosmer Pond, and?
Yep.
I don't know who oversees things over there.
Get back on the agenda, can I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the request for funding of $77,712.
From the harbor?
From the harbor master to complete the.
Reserves.
Change of styrofoam and the dolphin piling from the reserves, as stated in the request.
Perfect.
Do we need to specify?
We need a second, first?
Second, first?
Do you want to specify?
The reserve funds to be used are piling replacement reserves and public landing improvement reserves, it's in the request.
Oh, sorry, I missed that part. Oh, yeah, oh, it's in very small, okay, second?
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All's in favor? You can't vote, Steve, sorry. 5-0, thank you very much, thanks for coming, Steve.
Thank you.
Keep us posted.
I will.
Especially me.
But please keep.
Don't make me take my dinghy out, don't.
The second item on our action items tonight is a similar request, it's a funding request, but for the Snowball, which is basically the chairlift cable replacement, correct, Audra?
Yes, and to explain where this is coming from, we recently had an inspector come out to look at the triple chairlift, and they found a very small area where there had been some rubbing on the steel cable for the chairlift. And Rochelle can give you details about this, but the inspector was confident that we had another year of life out of it, but it needs to be replaced this coming, you know, summer season. And just with supply chain issues, we really need to commit to it now and put in a deposit so we have that cable available for the summer. So, you know, it's important to get the Select Board's approval for the full amount of the request. However, this is something that can potentially be stretched over two budget years. It's just, I wanted to front-load it and make sure that everybody was aware of it now and approved it now, because it is such a big expense. We do have funds available in the operating budget for this financial year to cover it.
Snowball operating budget to cover it, and so what you said may be suggesting there's a possibility that there may be a carryforward of what we don't spend in this budget into the next one?
Or that we don't necessarily have to fund it completely out of FY '23. Some of it could be funded out of the FY '24 budget.
What'll be coming out initially will be the deposit to buy the cable.
Correct.
It's like depending on how we end up this year?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it does.
So I make a motion to approve this for a purpose of discussion.
Second.
Motion made for the purpose of discussion and seconded, let's have a discussion.
I do have questions. So the first one is usually, and they're all relating to safety, so the, and Beth, I'm sorry, but I have questions. So the first one is, how often does the cable is, get inspected?
Every year, every fall.
Every year, every fall. What is the life expectancy of this cable?
Minimum of 20 years.
So when's the last time we changed it?
2014.
Right, when we did the redevelopment.
Eight years, eight, is that right? Eight years ago.
So did I under, sorry. So was, did I read that there was something wrong that caused unusual wear?
A couple of things that's happened. The way, I'll just do a little explaining.
Yep.
The way the cable is built, I actually have a picture.
You have pictures in here, actually.
I gave you pictures. It's, you know, it's a big cable, it's like this, and it's probably six individual cables all wrapped. And then there's synthetic hemp, it's not hemp anymore, but it's synthetic in the middle. To hang our riblet lifts, this is what it looks like, and this is our chair right here. Okay, it has this like little arm. We have to take a detentioner to the cable itself, open it up, and then we put the chairlift, the riblet piece into it, take the detentioner off, and that's what's holding the chair on the cable. And we had a 30-plus-year-old detentioner that malfunctioned on us a few years ago, and it made us have to, plus, we have to cut out that much of the synthetic hemp every time we move, and we have, we have, we have to move so many chairs so, every other year, or every year. So that piece of core comes out, and so that's why we have a 25-year lifespan on the cable, because every time we move the chair, we take some more of the stuff out. But when the detentioner mis malfunctioned, more of that core was taken out at that time.
So you moved the chairs as a, sorry, I'm, this isn't like, this is just a.
This is a perfect time for us to explain how these chairlifts work and what goes into it.
Part of the inspection that we do, we have an inspector come out and inspect the welds on the grips, and the grips actually go in the cable. We have to actually take those out and have them NDT'd or non-destructive testing.
We send them away.
Oh, as part of the?
Right.
So this is State Tramway Association that comes and inspects it.
Oh, okay.
So we have three different inspectors ideally come out.
This is all very reassuring.
It's a lot. And we ourselves do about two months in the summer after the season's over of lift maintenance. And what we found was our terminal rollback brake clamps onto the cable.
To stop it. It's a brake.
When there's a rollback, but the switch was bearing on it, and it wasn't running appropriately.
Right, right. So it was, the cable was going through the brake, and it was wearing over time.
It was abating.
Especially during fall chairlift rides, because in the winter, we don't have people coming down the chair, so there's a different load.
So we fixed the switch on the rollback brake, and we realized that when we fixed that, that we saw the rubbing, and that's when we contacted the inspector, showed him the pictures of what we found, and he's like, all right, well, it's good for this year, and then he came out and physically inspected it and said that it's good until next year. And that's where we came into it, and after that, it should be good for 20 years.
So is this going to be part of, because you didn't know about this switch bearing on the cable? So are you including that in your new maintenance protocol to just make sure it doesn't happen again? Because I mean, I'm not super excited about paying for a new cable every three years, or 14 years.
Oh, absolutely, we don't want to do that.
Or eight years instead of 20, because 2014 to 2022 is eight years, it's not 20. Or eight years instead of 20, because 2014 to 2022 is eight years, it's not 20.
It will be a massive install. It will be her whole crew and even more people that will have to help to do it.
For sure.
But going forward in the maintenance protocols, are we going to check for this issue so that it doesn't, it could happen again, so it just?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And the only way that we knew that that switch wasn't working properly is when we saw the rubbing. So now what we've done is we've included monthly braking tests on the lift. And we've also gone to LMS, which is Lift Maintenance Seminar. We go to Jiminy Peak every year to get training and they have three riblets so that we can learn more about it.
Um, is, is this all in like an operations manual somewhere or?
Yes, she has that book of all kinds of codes and laws and rules and things that she has to go.
Is that just something that you guys do in-house or do you, um, like I know for the transfer station and the landfill and all that, we have to have an updated, approved operations manual and a lot of the, it's something that we end up paying somebody to do. I'm just curious, like is that?
And it's not, it's not a bad idea, honestly. Um, this is all new to us.
Yeah. It's a lot for you guys to have to keep, like do, you know, all the time yourself.
There may be one out there, there's many riblets out there and, you know, we could ask some other skiers if they have operation.
I was going to say.
No, like for the whole facility?
Well, that would be great. It would be a, a lot of work, for sure.
Right, that's why, I mean, the, the transfer station hires, um, CV and Mahar to do it. There must be, there must be companies that help ski mountains with that kind of thing, just so you guys don't have to do everything yourself. This is a really, I'm sorry.
I didn't finish.
No, no, she's got her.
No, no, you're not done, I'll go.
It's a kind of different topic, so.
Um, but, but piggybacking on what Allison was saying, do you also have like an aging spreadsheet of all the equipment?
Did you not get that?
Sorry?
Is it in my, is it in the packet?
I was very impressed with that. Way to, that's a lot, that looks like a lot of work.
Oh, wow. Thank you. I did look at my packet, but I skimmed it.
I miss things on those too.
Uh, just a last comment, I think that the, uh, the, uh, what they're both talking to, from my perspective is the, this manual's information translates into potentially some kind of a, a preventative maintenance capital reserve, which might be smart to think about going forward so that we don't, there are other things in that you have to cost more than the cable, for sure, the bullwheels, et cetera. I have no idea how long, I have no idea, but I would think that would be a wise thing to discuss between, uh, or to develop between now and the budget cycle in February, is that right, Audra? In February? To have, think about having some preventative maintenance items that we want to cover, because you, you, you can build up quite a cadre of putting a few dollars away every year, especially over 10 years or more, and that'll cover some of the stuff, it's going to continue to happen, it's an old chairlift.
Right, well, I can tell you this, that what we do when we're running during the season, we do daily operational checks.
Oh, sure.
And then we do monthly operational checks. And then in the summer, that's when we go through the whole chair and it's about two months just on the.
I don't doubt it. I'm just trying to get to the financial part of it so you don't wind up with a thud at some point where we say, oh, you need $200,000, I'm exaggerating, but that, that kind of thing, it happens, you know, and we, we really need, I, I think we should develop that if we could, thinking into the budget for next year.
And I see, I mean, there's, there's, there are years where a lot of things are going to expire.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Would you mind sending me the spreadsheet?
You want this in Excel?
In Excel?
Sure.
So I can sort it by dates and just, but thank you, Beth, because I know I asked you that when we bought the.
Yeah, the compressors.
So thank you so much, and I apologize, I, I just skimmed over.
And are we sure that isn't an Excel that you're seeing? Because I.
Oh, it's in PDF.
Okay, because I sent it both ways, thinking you might want to, somebody might want to sort it differently than how my brain.
They, yeah, we can email them the Excel one that you sent.
Because my brain was like, let's do it by, yeah, Parks and Rec versus Snowball, but yeah, I, I totally agree.
Super cool, I, I really appreciate it.
Any other questions?
The other pieces that I would like to do and add to this is take a picture of each of the equipment so you kind of know what it looks like and what we're talking about.
Sure, for sure.
Because some of these things are like, what, what is a billy goat? Okay.
Uh, this new rope weighs almost 30,000 pounds.
15 tons.
Yeah. Are we going to, is this going to be, is that the installation cost going to be in next year's budget?
Yeah. It'll be the, the crew doing the work next year, yeah.
That's heavy lifting, though. I mean, that's heavier than you, equipment than you have.
Specifically to come in and pull the cable through as we're taking the cable out.
So the cost right now is just to purchase the rope? It, it doesn't include installation, so we need, that?
It doesn't include getting it to the Snowball.
Getting it to the Snowball, but not on the?
Not on the.
Okay.
Oh.
This is, yeah. This is a chunk of change.
So do we want to revise that and?
No, because we're going to, the urgent thing right now is the cable and just putting the, you know, deposit on it, um, but we can budget for the installation cost.
Okay.
At this time?
Yes.
So there was no, there was no like heat? There was nothing that show, indicated the rub?
Not until we actually did the work on it this summer.
Sure.
Because it's really hard to see, and when we get up there into the, the grips where they go in, we were taking those out and we had noticed the rubbing. So then we ran the lift to see what was causing the rubbing and that's when we realized it was the terminal rollback brake.
Do you have any damage to the brake, where on, I'm not familiar with the style of brake, but no pad, no nothing on it, that, that's not worn?
No, it was just where, because when the grips go in, it brings the cable up a little bit. And then we had extra splices put in that cable in previous years and that brought the cable up. So that's where the rubbing was.
That, just to be clear, that grip is to prevent a reverse flow on the chairlift, that's an emergency stop. It's not a normal thing that happens.
Power loss with all the weight.
Right, because that's the thing, that's the thing that can kill people, which happened at Atlanta two years ago. But that was, make it clear, it's not a, it's not a brake that should be doing anything unless there's an emergency.
Right.
Um, what are we going to do with the old cable?
Nothing, there's nothing to do.
Well, I mean, the disposal plan, because like.
I think you can probably take it. I think you can probably scrap it.
That's going to be a challenging item, sometimes they don't like things like.
What kind of?
Like that, like they'll reject various thing. It would be good to probably start looking into that.
Who, who's they?
I mean, the scrap metal people. And sometimes if there was like a chain link fence, for instance, at the wastewater treatment plant and they were replacing it and it had all these vines in it and they, it, I don't know if they ultimately did find a solution for it. To me, it seemed like, of course, you can just put that in the scrap, scrap metal, but they, the scrap metal place didn't want it, so.
They don't have the splicer or whatever to, to dispose of it.
What did we do with the cables when we did redevelopment?
Why don't you look into the?
Scraped it.
Beth, look into the recycling, let us know. Any other questions? Motion to?
We already had the motion. Yeah, we have, we have a motion.
We discussed it, didn't we?
Yeah.
We've discussed it and discussed it, anyway.
Oh, sorry, just one, it's, so it was you guys and not the inspector that caught this?
Yes, and then we took pictures and then we sent it to the wire rope inspector. He looked at it, told us what we should do, then he came out because he was busy at that time.
He stated that.
So when, so when was the normal inspection? When was the last time it was inspected?
Every year.
Every year.
Ryan comes, the wire rope comes every October.
And so that's when?
October, yeah.
But last October, there was nothing at all? Or did he?
Not that he found, no.
But remember, our fault chairlift rides have been very busy.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
It's interesting that it would, something would happen that would go from it being like not even notable at all on an inspection to it needs to be replaced next year. It makes it feel like maybe they missed it on the inspection.
Well, it could have been all winter, it could have been all last fall and then all winter. And then we started our chairlift rides this October, and what date did he come? I don't know what's on my good board.
He came, he came at the end of October.
Yeah, so we had, we'd been, but when did you switch the switch?
We switched that when we realized that was causing the rubber, which was this summer.
So it's basically like you guys kind of noticed at the same time, he didn't come out an extra time, it was like he was already going to come for his schedule.
We found it when we were doing our, right, early, our, our inspection ourselves on the lift this summer, then we contacted him.
I think we should vote, I mean.
I think we should, yeah, we'll move to vote. All those in favor? Five zero, thank you, Beth, thank you, Rochelle.
And thank you.
Rochelle, this is Rochelle.
I'm sorry, I did.
I'm sorry, I should have introduced her, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We, we've met her before.
Beth, come on.
Thank you. The third item on our action list is to the select board to approve a, a town requesting MDOT perform a speed limit study, field study on Route 52.
So there really is no backup for this in the packet because it's a pretty, I guess, informal process with MDOT to request these sort of, um, speed limit field studies. So, um, over the years, we've gotten a series of complaints about speeds along Route 52 and just concerns with safety. There, there was, actually, it's one of our employees now, when he was younger, got hit by a car off Route 52, um, as, when he was a pedestrian. So, you know, it, it, it's a pretty fast-moving stretch of road and, you know, there are people recreating out there, we've got the, you know, the carriage trail, um, that's a town facility, Main's Cliff, it's very popular for hiking, you know, of course, the, the people swim at the ledges. So it's, you know, it's a, a very well-used stretch of road by pedestrians and people parking their car and walking to different recreational areas there. And so we've had some, um, you know, concerns lately about vehicles and the speed that they're traveling at and, you know, vehicles that are verging into the shoulder where people are walking. And so, um, you know, I, I just thought it would be a good time to request a, a study from MDOT on speed limits there and just see if there was any potential of, uh, you know, speed limits being lowered, because that's, that's what seems to be the main request for people who call us with issues.
Right, just as a point of reference, the last time the town of Camden Select Board, before any of us were on the Select Board, uh, sent us similar requests, requests, actually two, for Route 1 North and for, what's the road that Shannon lived on?
Melvin Heights.
Melvin Heights Road. They did the study finally on Route 1 North, they never did the one on Melvin Heights Road. But you do have to request individually, any one of those and they'll decide what and when and how.
Here, so let's have her go first.
Okay, so I've got to hand it over, she did, yeah, she did.
My question is, what is the section on Route 52 we're going to do the study? So is it from?
I'd say the, the majority of the complaints we get are Malinois to roughly the Lincolnville line, um, but I, I do think there are, you know, outside of that, there are definitely concerns as well, so.
There have been.
We could absolutely make it as, as long as you all think is appropriate, because you also get this feedback as well.
Yeah, Allison, go ahead.
Yeah, so the, I mean, really the entire stretch of, you know, Mountain Street to the Lincolnville Town Line has been the subject of many concerns. People come to the Pathways Committee occasionally and just make pleas to try to, um, increase the priority level of that, whether it be sidewalks to the state, uh, to the Carriage Road or, um, all kinds of things like that. So, oh, yeah, looks like maybe, um, but, you know, it's been definitely a frequent topic of conversation. And then with bikes especially along, you know, as you're approaching, um, the boat launch and the hiking trails, a lot of people pull off there, so it, it changes to 40 miles an hour.
Be nice.
But not, um, but not soon enough. I think there's a pretty good case to be made for lowering that 40 mile per hour section also. But, um, I mean, I guess this is a long-winded way of saying I'm very supportive of doing this. However, um, I think being clear with MDOT is a good idea, that I was trying to pull up what their procedure is. It doesn't say that we request a speed study if we want the speed lowered. It says that, you know, I mean, it's kind of funny, it says like a municipal official has to promise that they've driven the road and that in their reasonable understanding, they determine that it's, it feels too fast to them. And then, you know, they request that the speed limit be lowered. And then, yes, MDOT normally comes with their whole thing and they threaten to possibly raise the speed limit and all of that. But, you know, I would just like us to be a little bit more clear in not just requesting that they study it, but being clear that our concern is speed and pedestrian safety.
That's what the purpose of the nine-point speed study that MDOT does is exactly that. They will come up with a calculation with the nine points to determine what the speed limit should be. Now, whether that's, if honestly, honestly.
It's notoriously skewed for.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's all, it's all about speed, it's all about speed. And, and that's what they did on Route 1, they did the nine criterion from the State Park to Lincolnville Line, they did the, it's not just speed of cars, it's a lot of other factors involved.
Yeah.
And, and they, they, they do talk about raising, but honestly, I know the individual runs the department, he's not interested in raising speed limits, I'm not worried about that part, but I, they, they will, if they accept doing it, when they can do it, because I know they're backed up as heck, they'll do the whole stretch.
So, um, there's, there's several different kind of distinct sections in there, um, coming up from here, I believe it's 25 miles per hour, maybe up to the cemetery or so.
Thirty-five, isn't it?
There is a certain.
The speed limit size is 30.
Thirty coming from downtown up to the cemetery or so.
Cemetery.
Right, right. Um, and then the shoulders do widen out a little bit there at some point, um, and I think the speed limit goes up. And, you know, Turnpike has good, I used to be a big cyclist before I was injured, um, so I know that, I know the road well, it's a beautiful road to cycle on when they pave it. I mean, where it gets dangerous, at least for cyclists, is, uh, particularly when you're going past a lake and there's no shoulder on either side. I have no issues with, uh, doing a, a study, I think we should always update with the amount of traffic, things, things do change. But I do think that it should be recognized that there are very distinct sections in there that differ.
That's absolutely correct, that's correct. That's correct.
In the way the road's built, in the visibility, yeah, and the amount of use.
Yes, and MDOT will recognize that this has two different speed limits and, or three.
Three or four.
It could be. They understand that and that complicates what they have to do, but they know how to attract that and attack each one of those.
Particularly dangerous is the kids swimming on the ledges, in my opinion, and the cyclists. Those two things to me are, it seems to me, it's an interesting thing, not to critique too much, but we ought to have a greater police presence out there when the young, and I, you know, teenagers mostly like to use the ledges just to kind of slow down the traffic there.
Did you want to make a comment, sir?
I don't know if it's.
You'd have to come up here, please, and introduce yourself, please. Thank you.
My name is Tim Shaw, 58 Mountain Street, also Route 52. Been there since 2008. I don't know if it's this agenda item or the next one, we're going to talk about speeds or traffic issues.
We're talking about, we're talking about MDOT approval of doing a speed study on that road.
I'm guessing whatever you say is going to be relevant to both.
Yeah, I think either one.
People are worried about the speed limit. Well, they're not following the speed limit now.
Mm-hmm.
Not even close. I mean, I've, I walk the town section or run four days a week in the mornings, 52 weeks a year. I live on Mountain Street. I guarantee, it says 30 miles an hour, I guarantee the average speed is over 45. And I hate to say it, that includes city vehicles. This morning, I saw a vehicle from the Fire Department whipping into town, easily going 45 miles an hour up to the stop sign at Mountain Street. I mean, it's just, there's been no police presence, at least in the last two years. People realize that there's no penalty.
Yeah.
And personally, myself, I have a difficult time getting out of my driveway. I'm at the curve before it comes down the thing. If people are going that speed, I cannot see their car until they're past the curve and they're on me. It's getting, and I'm not the only one, there's at least four other driveways on the same boat.
Sure.
Secondly, is that we worry about public safety. A lot of the middle school kids use that for cross-country training, this in-town, the in-town section. With that traffic around there, I would not do that. I mean, what we're asking people to do is just, instead of going 45 miles an hour, doing the speed limit at 30 miles for that one-third of a mile, it costs them 12 seconds. That's physics. The bad physics is a car hitting a kid at 30 miles an hour versus 45 miles an hour, that's 225% more impact on that kid if he gets hit. That's physics. And apparently, you know, we've given up the policing of the issue. I haven't seen anybody pulled over there in two years. That's my, just my thoughts.
Well, thank you very much for coming and giving them, we appreciate it. With that, back to our request for Route 52, which seems clear, that the motion should be that we would cover the whole section, as I've heard, and they know how to do that. Different, there are different sections and we know who to send it to, but it has to come from the town, we have to approve that. So we have a motion to approve this action.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request to MDOT for speed limit field study on Route 52 from the section of the Lincolnville Town Line up to Mountain Street.
The intersection of Mountain Street and.
And Rockwell. And Mountain Street and Route 1.
I second, but could we qualify that?
Let's second, then we'll talk about that.
A second.
All right, discussion, now we'll qualify. Go ahead, Sophie.
I mean, I'm bothered that we call this a speed study.
That's what MDOT.
I know, I know. But I would like to, you know, at least make it in the public record that pedestrian safety, bicycle safety should be kind of the criteria for MDOT to estimate, to assess those speed limits and make sure that we create safe environments. That's my only point.
Motion's been made, a second. Any other discussion? Allison.
So I'm wishing I could pull this up quickly, but it did seem very clear to me that they benefit from, you know, they do their study and all of that with numbers, but they also take into consideration qualitative opinions from municipal officials. And so the, I think spending a little bit, in addition to sending this or whatever, spend, whether, maybe, maybe it's referring it to the Pathways Committee or sending recommendations to them is a good starting point.
The town would like to, in addition to the request for speed study, like to send some letter of some form, they can do that in parallel, there's no reason why you wouldn't. I know, but the speed study is a very specific procedure they go through, related to speed and, but to reinforce it.
But it does also have non, you know, it has, part of their speed study and their determination is based on things that are not measured with a, with a speed apparatus. It's actually.
That there are nine criteria and only one is the speed limit, one of the nine. Of the nine, it includes the number of driveways, includes any industrial or, you know, facilities that have more than one car in the parking lot kind of thing. It includes a long list of those items that relate to population on the road.
And then the other thing, I do think a good point is brought up in terms of, and maybe this is something for the, for the next agenda item, but in terms of enforcement priorities and enforcement policies, one of the things that I've discussed with DOT in the past is that when they set their speed limits, they do that based on considering that the speed limit is actually the speed limit. And so when you, you know, when a car hits a pedestrian at 30 miles per hour versus 25 miles per hour, each of those, it's like a very significant increase in the likelihood of death and serious injury. And so they don't factor in, when DOT sets their speed limit, they don't set, take into consideration an eight to 10 mile per hour grace area that often happens with law enforcement and other parts of the country. They, there have been movements to actually consider speed limits, speed limits. And so I too wonder about enforcement and ticketing and, you know, I used to see in the paper all the time that, you know, there were X number of citations and speed enforcement conducted on these streets and it would be good. I'm sure that's still happening, but it would be nice to get a report on it sometime.
Sure.
And then also if we could make a habit of, when our police department does speed studies, having that data available to people would be, I know that it's available when it's requested, but I never, none of that ever comes to us.
Let's close on this item. We can talk about traffic calming, it's the next item. So I'd have a motion and a second for this item. Any further discussion? All's in favor, 5-0. Is that clear enough for you, Audra, what you need to do there?
Yes.
Now, to the next item, which is a discussion item, which relates to some of the things you were just talking about. We can certainly do some of that, but we have, have had, and Audra has worked on quite a while, actually, talking about following up on our priority about public safety and that kind of thing, traffic calming and speed limit reduction requests and this thing where we, she's constantly getting requests about speeding on various streets, which is quite pandemic, actually, to use a phrase. But, and in our packet is a draft of something that's been modified a few times, actually. It's just to start the thought process of the Select Board on this matter regarding setting up a policy, and that's the purpose of this discussion. Some of the things Allison's already discussed are part of that discussion, but there is a package in here, in our packet, that talks about a procedure for individuals and neighborhoods to be able to, or to, you know, request something and go through A, B, C, D, and E, assuming that the, that each hurdle along the way meets some general criteria. So comments board on the idea of the policy, pros, cons, concerns from you all.
On this particular policy that we're looking at now?
If you, if you, I mean, don't be, I mean, if one wants to throw the policy out the window, you can say that too, but yes, all we have right now to chew on is this draft of an idea.
I mean, are we, and also just, is it like support for having a policy at all or support for pursuing this at all?
Yes, yes, this is a discussion. We don't have to make a final decision tonight. We're going to give Audra specific direction to perhaps recraft something or to modify.
I would say too, that I don't, I know there's a real temptation to make sure that we have it perfect in the beginning.
Good point.
But I would say that because this is, it's going to be a new process, it's a new program, I think that kind of coming up with a starting place that everybody's comfortable with and working through one of these requests and being, you know, flexible to sort of change it as we go. So we're kind of coming up with a system, you know, we have a good kind of framework for a starting place, but we're all recognizing the fact that because this is the first time we've done it, it's going to be subject to change.
I think that's an excellent point because any of our policies live in that world of we don't have to make it perfect from the start, but the starting place, this is a suggested starting place.
Right, and it's just as much a sort of administrative policy as it is something that the boards are proving because it's a shared responsibility between the board and staff to work with the, you know, whatever the neighborhood is to move this forward.
Finger up.
Yeah, I do. One of the questions I have is on when, when neighborhoods or people request a, I guess a study, how, how are we making sure they know that somebody else on the same street has already requested it? In essence, you know, I can, I can see on Bayview, like half Bayview are requesting.
You have to have 90% participation.
But what's the size of the, how do you quantify the neighborhood or the street?
For a long street.
Or, because 90%, that's my, that's just, you know, what's the limit?
And I.
Maybe it's something we can think about, but also the idea of having it public, like, well, you know, the people on Gold Street have requested this, so don't, don't show up and request it again, or we'll keep you posted. Some kind of process so that it's transparent and people can kind of like track.
I find that neighborhood thing to be a little ambiguous. It's difficult, we'd have, first of all, I think we'd have trouble getting 90% of people to agree that these walls are white or what, the sky is blue, right? That's a high bar. And second, defining a neighborhood is, is a little bit difficult. If you're, if you're trying to do it with a percentage of people that live in that particular area or neighborhood or who are affected.
Something like that.
And also people who are seasonal, right? So.
It's going to be hard to get 90%. It's a high bar, for sure.
It is, it is, but objectively, obviously, to me, this is here because we don't want one person to be submitting something to the town for an entire street.
This is a perfect kind of discussion about this, like, what is that, what is that threshold where you feel comfortable?
I think it has to be a pretty high bar because we do not need every single street in Camden coming and saying, I want my street.
Want speed bumps or chicanes or.
Whatever, exactly. Because where I live, I would love to have the road slower as well. I'm sure where you live, you'd like to have it slower as well, but there's also reality that comes into it that the people have to get where they're going as well. So I think the bar has to be pretty high.
Or perhaps it doesn't have to be quantified, maybe it's general consensus of the neighborhood. We can, you know, because it has to be some large number of people on the street, not 100% certainly, and probably not 50%, but something, and I don't like always putting numbers on it either, but it needs to be, just something, we need something that says this is a neighborhood-supported issue. Allison.
So having gone through this a couple times with different streets, what seems to happen is that, that we want to avoid are finding out closer to the end of the process that like a third of the street or like a half the street, people that live there are like really opposed, you know, they think everything's just fine, they're tired of their neighbors complaining and they have like completely conflicting ideas because then we put a lot of effort into trying to improve something only to find out that it's.
People that are the loudest.
Right. So, you know, and also just figuring out, okay, and usually what happens is they, in a couple of places, it's been like they've, people have gotten together and they've decided also on what they want the solution to be. And so figuring out how to, I think that maybe if the language were just a little bit looser, I'd like to start out by trying to have the attitude generally be that we're looking for a way to say yes rather than no, that that 90% isn't used to be like, sorry, we've calculated and because, you know, these three houses are vacant, you can't get your 90%. But, you know, each area is, is going to be different and I think staff kind of needs to make a, you know, a judgment, like, you know, in general, everybody is safer if everybody slows down a little bit, on really on every single street. So in some places, it would be a simple, you know, it might not need to go through this like huge process, there might be some time. Basically, what I'm saying, very support, I think this is an awesome start and maybe there's just some language in there that makes it a little more flexible. When it comes down to deciding something controversial, it's going to come to the Select Board and that's when we can all decide if this is, you know, to make that hard decision of whether it's going to go forward or not. But I think staff can decide at, sort of at what point you need that support from, from the Select Board. Like you can evaluate at the beginning and sometimes you might feel like this has merit to go forward and develop a little bit of a plan that can be, be like presented to the Select Board, but then other times you might be like, I don't know, it doesn't, there's no real sign that this has widespread support, so let's bring it to the Select Board first.
Stephanie, you had your hand up.
I think that's the whole point of trying to get to what percentage of a neighborhood makes it something that comes forward. It puts the request on the citizens to go around and talk to their neighbors to get support of somehow and then bring that forward. I don't think that it would be up to, and I'm not saying that that's what you're saying, but I don't think it's up to any of the town folk to then have three people come in and say, well, we want this and then we have to go out and prove that it's a widespread.
Right.
I mean, the thing is that sometime, I guess sometimes it's not just a neighborhood issue. Like on Mechanic Street, the, for example, some of the people that express concerns about the speed on Mechanic Street, many of them are not Mechanic Street residents, but they walk on Mechanic Street and have noticed a problem and, you know.
Or their kids go to school, get to the school that way.
Right, and so, and, you know, in those cases, I think it matters.
I don't think this process is for that sort of thing.
No, no, because it's more of like, you know, if the sort of arterial roads, we kind of have to deal with them a little differently.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, so, okay, so Mechanic Street can't be considered under this?
Well, I think you have to.
I would say that Mechanic Street is such an important arterial that that's a much bigger conversation.
Yeah, I agree.
And I mean, if, we did lines and.
If the residents got together on Mechanic Street, signed a petition and said.
I could get 90% on Mechanic Street, I bet, but.
I'm sure.
And this is a process that you could fight to come forward with that. I mean.
I agree with you, Stephanie.
On board with that.
So like Knowlton Street, for instance, or, I mean, I just think it shouldn't always be, sometimes there are broader community interests that are not.
We have to trust the judgment of the town to realize that. There's going to be a lot of judgment in here.
I mean, yeah, and that's kind of the benefit of, it is a small town, so, you know, we do have sort of a standard, but I don't think, you know, this is going to sort of prohibit us from being flexible when there are, you know, other factors to consider, like it's a, it's a route to school or to like a recreational facility that's well-used. You know, there's a lot of mitigating factors that, you know, I think that we're, we're going to take into consideration.
Yeah, I think the core of it is judgment and we have to start off with judgment. If you try to quantify or bring in a lot of factors, you're never going to get this thing drafted, it'll never get done.
Right, and that's, and I mean, and I'm talking about for the, you know, the initial support, to kick it over that threshold where we're all sort of like, okay, well, this is an idea worth pursuing.
We could talk about the majority of the neighborhood, we don't have to put a number if you don't want, if the board prefers that, but leave it in the judgment of.
I mean, I do think saying something like, you know, over 50% of the.
It is good to encourage people to go around and talk to their neighbors and.
You can say no less than 50%.
No less than 80%.
Less than 75, but 80%. I, I, yeah, yeah.
I think it needs to be a. Mind that if we keep it at 50%, it doesn't mean we need to make a change, it just means that we have a discussion.
Yeah.
Keeping that bar that high, I don't think is necessary. I think more important is, is when it comes before us, that we have a process, a scientific method.
When you say coming before us?
Or coming before.
Town.
Town, yeah.
What you're probably trying to say, before we expend a lot of resources and going through like the planning effort and the designing effort and the, you know, we're passing a threshold where we know that there's a broad base of support.
Exactly. Sophie, go ahead.
So I, besides the neighborhood residential interest, the commercial interest also might be there, so it's not just residents, it's also, there's lots of businesses. But I'm also thinking that we could triangulate with other existing data, you know, like the number of incidents that have been reported to the police, so that we can, we have objective data that can also support a more subjective approach from residents who feel that they're at risk. So I think, I love this, I think it's a great start, I think we should give it a go. I think a high bar is necessary or else, I'm going to come every day, actually, because I have like seven. No, but I mean, it's great to encourage participation, it's great to have a process, but I also think that we have to be reasonable. We cannot, those projects, we cannot undertake, you know, reasonably, how many projects are we going to undertake every year?
Many, because they're time consuming.
So we have to manage expectations and also make sure that we can actually undertake, you know, those projects. So I think I, my preference would be the slow start with a high bar and see how it goes. And as you said, let's not, let's not let the better be the enemy of the good. This is good enough to start it and just monitor it.
Yeah, I think you're right. I personally have to trust the judgment of Audra and her team to be, to, there is no road or roads that are absolutely identical to each other in this town. So that starts there. And there are factors up the wazoo and then it'll, it'll come. And to point to this paragraph, as I said earlier, this is just so we don't let this one or two people who are adamant about something lead the charge. There needs to be some neighborhood consensus, you can judge or your team can judge.
Right, yeah, because, I mean, I guess, you know, a lot of this is prompted by, I do have a few streets where there are a few individuals that are very, very adamant.
Yeah.
But then as you, and this is the experience you all have. But then as you, and, and this is the experience you all have, as you talk to more people on the same street, a few of them will say, "You know what, I don't agree with them, I don't want that there." And so I guess it's, it's just trying to put some responsibility on the people requesting to make sure that, you know, they're, they're advocating for more people than, more people's interests than just their own.
And, you know, and some of this, I think, was instigated by everything that went on Gould Street. In, in, in that particular case, and I think in other cases that are like that, we need to consider what type of, um, study that we're going to do, you know, what methods we're going to take. If it is requested, that we make a traffic modification and if, you know, Audra, you and your staff want to dig deeper into it, that we have a a plan and a policy, and it can vary a little bit. But it, it should be, you know, "Okay, well, we're going to put out speed control boxes or the speed detection boxes in the pneumatic strips, and it's going to be in place for two weeks, we're going to make a modification, leave it in place for two weeks." Times a year, um, maybe taken into consideration because, you know, if it happens right around the middle of October, there's a significant shift in the number, amount of traffic around town at a certain time of year or sometimes in the spring. Those sorts of things need to be taken into consideration and really probably ought to be put in here. Again, not hard guidelines, but some guidelines that, you know, would, would make it so that everybody understands the process that they go through. When they do bring it to you, you say, "Well, okay, you have my attention, these are the next steps we're going to take and we'll see what the data brings."
Yeah, and, and the way that I want to approach it, I have, I have good planners now, I've got, you know, people who are really capable of rolling out these sorts of processes, so it's going to be more of a holistic, we're not just going to use speed data and 85th percentile and all of that, it's going, you know, we're going to do the full, you know, conflict density analysis, activity level analysis, all the different factors that you would put into trying to figure out, what's the characteristic of the street, who's using it, what are they using it for? What's the geometry of the street that encourages a certain type of driver behavior, pedestrian behavior, ability for cyclists, all those factors will be taken into consideration, because if we're going to do it, we need to do it right. And this is about traffic calming, not necessarily traffic control.
Right.
You know, we may find within this that we need to put up traffic control devices, but typically the, the focus is going to be traffic calming, so, you know, we're not going to be putting up stop signs or rerouting traffic, it's going to be trying to look at, "How is the street laid out, are there different ways that we could lay it out so it, it slows people down?" So that's, that's more of the focus. Right.
Yeah, the, the parameters are, Allison's point, actually, there are many. And, and not left one off the table, which was, if we do something here, does it affect someplace else next door?
Right.
You know, that happens all the time, it's the amoeba syndrome we talked about. Um, but I think that the policy allows that, that kind of an approach. If you start going into too much detail on exactly the procedure, now you're into a procedure, not a policy.
Well, that's found, everything Audra just said is found under two qualification in the whole thing.
Yeah. So, oh, I'm sorry, Allison.
Um, I think it would be beneficial to, to us and to the community at some point to have maybe a brief presentation from somebody on like best practices in traffic calming and street design and, you know, there's a, there's an entire field of study and best practices that are being developed all over the place. And we should be like probably more knowledgeable about those things. I've sort of stumbled upon some of it slowly, but, um, you know, that in many places, they're reducing a speed limit just across the board in certain types of streets to 20 miles per hour. MDOT even has that in their, you know, guidelines. Camden doesn't have any streets that are 20 miles per hour. 25 feels really, really fast on Central Street. And so that's why a lot of the time I think people are saying, "People are going so, so fast." And because they are going at sort of an inappropriate speed, but then when the police department goes out there, they say, "Well, it's 25 and we did have this eight mile per hour threshold, and so 85% of the cars are going within this and this," and then there's this conclusion that there's no problem. And there isn't really a problem based on those criteria, but, you know, looking at also street design and there's so much that they've learned about, just if you have little turns in the street or those, I, I just think we should be prepared for the types of solutions that anybody who, like I'm guessing in the planning department, all of those things, you know, you've seen what, what types of solutions they come up with in other places and we should kind of be like mentally prepared for the types of things that might...
Yeah, I think that's a good idea to put that, put that on the agenda at some point for public education, but right now, let's, let's focus on whether or not we think this policy, or 90% of it, to be fair, is, is, is something we want to start with.
Yeah, I just don't want it to be like only neighborhood by neighborhood, because in general, we have established safety as a, a priority, and so...
So you don't want to do this policy?
I do want to do the policy, but I don't, I think that it's also good to keep in mind that, that...
But I think part of the process can be that once, once a, once a request qualifies for further study, then the public be made aware and can bring input, so kids going to school, other people who are not residents of the area can come and, and share their input. I think we have to start somewhere and...
Oh, I'm very supportive of the policy, I'm just saying...
And design the process so that the input is wider.
Well, I think the policy is, is fine, I mean, there's, there are little things, but I don't want to beat it, you know, append, it says, you know, the list of things are in appendix A, there is no appendix A. But, and I like the fact that there's a budget, I think that's really important, because I think there are going to be times when we're going to, you know, somebody might want to, town staff might want to seek like an outside opinion on something, or some of the solutions that we come up with might have a budget or just time, you know, from, from town staff, so I think we should go make sure that gets into the budget process and that in the meantime we could, we have some select board contingency that could be used if some, you know, an opportunity were to come up for that, so, thank you for tackling this, Audra.
Yeah, I can mention, um, Mechanic Street appendix was removed, was it?
It was, no, it's still in there.
I think that should be removed.
It's removed, yeah.
Discussion here.
I need to find the reference to it.
That would be something that, alright, there we go.
Oh, yeah, I, I mean, yeah, that's...
And they will, I mean, I think that's part of the public education.
It does.
What might happen to some of us is that you look at the list of things that they might consider and it will be detrimental if all of us were like, "I didn't know they were talking about that, I thought we were just going to have balloons on the stop sign and that's what we were talking about, not obstructions in the road," so...
Well, if we move to approve, we should probably delete the appendix one, we can always add it later, unless, unless you feel...
This is just discussion.
That's right, that's correct, I wanted to redraft it though to finalize it for us.
I, I have a question about specifics here. If, let's say a neighborhood does, you know, you have five people from a neighborhood come into the town office or email, who, who is this going through, Audra? Are you going to handle it yourself or do you have a department head that you have in, in mind?
So it's going to have to be a team of department heads that are working, or, you know, staff that they allocate to work on it, so public works, police department, planning, but it's going to start out as a planning process. So the planning department will be, you know, the initial touch point with whoever comes in who's requesting traffic calming. I mean, that doesn't mean that, you know, I get, I get these sorts of requests all the time, I know all of you do as well. So, you know, we can certainly, as part of good customer service, always sort of directing them to where they need to go and what they need to do and helping them with it. That's really everybody's responsibility, but, you know, sort of the initial walkthrough of the process will be with the planning department.
Okay.
Can we develop a form?
Yes, yeah, it's going to be the, the application with the signatures and, yes.
Even?
Yeah.
Questions?
I like that idea, I do, and what you just described as well.
You raised your hand, you want to make a comment?
Yes.
Up here, please. Otherwise we can't hear you.
Tim Shaw, again, I just would like to know, uh, who do I talk to to get the city vehicles to obey the city speed limit? I don't think I need a policy for that.
I'll, I'll talk with them about that.
Okay, and I mean Parks and Recreation, the Camden Red Trucks, Fire Department, I mean, 45 and U of down Mountain Street, I see it every day. Second is, who do I need to talk to to, it does cost a penny, in fact, probably save money, the town may make some money, enforcement of the speed limit on Mountain Street.
That's, I mean, they were just talking about all of that, so that's something, the select board was, enforcement priorities for the police department.
Okay, alright.
I mean, I think we share similar concerns, I'm not sure if there was an answer to that.
No, there was no answer, we just talked about addressing it, but it's, it's not in this policy, obviously.
Okay, that's fine.
But, understood.
Gotcha, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, do you have enough to, you feel armed and dangerous enough now, Audra, on this one?
Yes. Do you, are you comfortable with us just saying something pretty vague, like the majority of residents in the identified area?
Mm-hmm, I think that'd be easier.
Yeah.
You, you decide what majority is and you'll know whether it's a couple that are screamers and, and being concerned screamers, of course, are legitimate, but that there's a bunch of non-screamers who are still legitimate, but, you know...
I do, I do think it's important that they, you know, kind of putting it on some of the requesters to gain additional support is important.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, it could be as simple as, please, you know, provide a, a list of the other, you know, residents on the street that, that you've contacted. Some kind of format, I don't know whether it's signatures from everybody, that might be too cumbersome, but some format for saying, you know, preference will be given or to...
In order to submit the application, signatures must be received from at least 90% of the residents living in the area where the traffic calming projects are requested.
Yeah, I think that might be, that's the kind of stuff that you may need to change the language so that just the procedural logistical
Yeah, yeah.
aspect of it doesn't...
Majority is a good idea.
Sounds good.
Of signatures or just?
I think we would maybe like direct Shenley or somebody else or Audra to figure a model that, there must be ways that this is working in other places, or, I don't think, I don't think requiring signatures makes sense.
I, I don't mind signature, I think if you're going to lower the bar, if you're going to lower the bar, getting a certain number of signatures is...
I agree, if the people are, they will, sharing the concern, they'll, they'll be happy to sign.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, right, or signatures or some other form of, you know, sometimes people are...
Email us, or whatever, yeah.
There's DocuSign, you know, they can do electronic signatures. I agree. But also, what is the, I mean, in, in area X, how many people live there or whatever, I mean, because if I look at a request and there's three people who request, but they actually are 100% of that area.
Right, yeah.
The universe also on the form to make sure that we understand that, but I think, yeah.
Hey, good, thanks, Audra.
Great, thank you.
With that, we'll move on to, Audra, your reports?
Yes, let me just pull up my little notes. Alright, so I, I don't have a lot, I just wanted to remind everyone, the General Assembly for the Midcoast Council of Governments is tomorrow from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the Snow Bowl. The speakers that they're going to have this year are Judy East, who runs the municipal planning program with the state for the Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry. And I think Hannah Pingree is going to try to make it, so, you know, good people from the state to talk about partnerships between municipalities and the state in terms of planning and the future of these regional organizations and regional planning and economic development efforts. Um, so if any of you can attend, that would be great, because we are dues-paying members and we, we sort of strong-armed our counter, not strong, we, we built a base of support over the years to make sure that all of Knox County is members of the Midcoast Council of Governments, so that's, um, Camden was very important in making that all happen, so anybody who can attend, that would be great. We've had another meeting of the little, little group that I've assembled for future planning for Curtis Island. One of the members, Mike Scaling, has set up a, um, a speaker, her name is Elaine Jones, and she was very involved in the restoration of Burnt Island in Booth Bay Harbor. And so Elaine is going to come on November 30th at 3:30 PM here in the French Room just to explain the project on Burnt Island and what they did and answer any questions and, uh, 3:30 PM. So I think that that's, that's going to be very helpful for us in trying to plan for the future of Curtis Island, so anybody who's interested in attending that is more than welcome to, to come and, and listen to Elaine and ask questions.
Audra, could you say the time, date and time one more time?
Yes, November 30th at 3:30 PM.
Thank you.
The Wednesday.
And those are, those are mine.
It's not going to be on YouTube.
Yes, we'll make sure that we film it and have it on our channel.
Select board...
It would be.
You can, you can row.
I can swim.
Okay. Select board reports, Tom.
Somebody. Bob, you know, we went to the Midcoast Internet Development Corp. meeting yesterday, they are submitting the grant application. Not for us, but for three of the towns in our district, Cushing, Belmont and Moro?
Uh, Moro.
Moro. So it is moving forward, no traction on the towns that are better served than the towns that are underserved, but, um, if they get that grant, they're, this window, they said was 20 million, and then there'll be another 50 million grant million, uh, window next, not knowing the dates on that yet, but, um, underserved portions of Camden could be coming. Sort of depends on how this one goes and, you know, like anything, who applies and anything to add to that?
No, that's correct, it's about a $7 million grant for those small towns who are principally unserved. And it's a big chunk of $20 million budget, by the way, but they will know that supposedly in January. Anything else, Tom?
No, thank you.
Allison?
Uh, yeah, so I'm just going to share my screen real quick here. With the, oh, of course, we've got a, um, so the Conservation Commission, we're going to mirror. The Conservation Commission has been, um, learning how to use the stormwater, um, mapping application. And, um, this is sort of a continuation of the project that was budgeted a few years ago. A lot of people don't realize how much data is available, like mapping data on the town website. So, um, I was just going to go through and show you where to find. You can get all of the, you know, all of the, the stormwater system, the sewer system, the property lines, all of that. If you go to just the regular town website, then you go under Apartments, Assessing, and then...
Whoops, you tracked down.
Ah, Apartments, Assessing.
There you go, you almost had it.
And Online Assessing Data.
What's that mean?
What's that?
I didn't know what that signal was.
So, under Layers, you can, um, Select Drainage Map, this is what we've been working on. And that will show you all of those purple squares here, it's going to reload in a second, are, um, catch basins and all of the lines, our pipes. And, um, one of the things we've been doing with the Conservation Commission and a few interns over the past few years, has been basically improving that whole system so that we know where, like the water from, you know, when it goes down into this catch basin, it follows this path, or, you know, the ditches that go along the road or little streams that go behind people's houses. We really need, like for, for planning and development purposes, really need to know like where the area, the water from one area is, is going. And so what we found is that there, you know, for the most part, a lot of this is really, really accurate. There are places, um, that there are mistakes, and so the Conservation Commission, we did, I guess, two weeks ago, we went out, I gave them, um, like a tutorial on how to use the app.
the app, it's just a, you know, an app on your phone, and they've been validating and correcting different areas, so very similar to our Tree app, but anybody that, we've had a few requests from different people that, like, you know, look on here and notice that there's, you know, there's something wrong, or they're having some kind of a stormwater issue, and that we have it wrong in the system, so, that, for anybody that wants to learn how to do that, you don't necessarily have to be on the Conservation Commission. So, yeah, that is basically sort of the biggest update. Tomorrow, I'm speaking at the Gulf of Maine Research Institute about sea level, on a panel about sea level rise, I don't know if anybody's seen the articles in Down East Magazine, about, like, they took 10 Maine coastal towns and did profiles about the experiences that they're having with sea level rise, and it's really interesting, like, how other towns are grappling with it and what things they're doing, so, I'm looking forward to hearing what everybody else has to say about that, and, yeah.
Ms. Romana?
A couple things, so last week, Audra and I, we went to Rollins Road.
Where?
We, we took, well, we took our friends from the Coastal Mountain Land Trust up on their offer to show us the trail, it's a really beautiful trail, they've done an amazing job, and they have plenty of good ideas to make it really multi-use, and, so it's very cool. It was a nice, nice day for a walk, and I learned a lot about that area and the trail, so, I'm going to encourage people to go and use it.
Check it out.
Check it out, because it's really great, and it was a good thing. And there was a meeting of the Harbor Committee yesterday morning, and, but I don't have anything to report, because unfortunately, I didn't attend it, but I will have on the next, our next meeting, because Josh has expressly asked me to look at the recording and then call him, so, I will do so.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Stephanie?
I don't have any.
Okay, good, oh, not good, but thank you. It didn't come out right, Stephanie, I'm sorry. Just a reminder, we have an odd schedule going forward, the next Select Board meeting is November 29th, rarely we have three in a month, and the last meeting of the year will be December 13th. So those are the, and in one of those two meetings, we're going to have to put the calendar for next year on the Select Board, because we don't, yeah, well, I paid a note of it, because I keep forgetting, but we have to get that done by the end of the year, also, among other things, we have to get done.
Which one is the ugly sweater?
The what?
Didn't we decide...
The ugly sweater meeting?
The ugly sweater.
We decided last year that we...
It's December 14th for you.
It's for, it's every week for me, I know, but, but didn't we decide last year that we would have, like, the last board meeting, we would have like the Christmas jumper ugly sweater?
So I have to go out and buy an ugly sweater?
You don't have to buy it.
Steal it?
We can figure it out, we can actually do like a...
Share?
Yeah, we can, I can pick one for you.
Solicit donations from the community.
Well, if you're going to do, the only meeting we have near Christmas is the 13th of December, so you don't have a lot of choices if you want to do something different like that. But that'd be fine, Sophie, whatever you dictate. In charge of the ugly sweater committee.
I'll be the ugly sweater committee.
Okay.
Like, you know, the crazy Christmas jumper with reindeers and the...
Wait, cool.
Blinking eyes.
Great.
Like they're on...
So with that, I wanted to...
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much, before I get in more trouble, Stephanie. Motion made in second, any further discussion, all those in favor?